Meeting with the Board of Commissioners September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty to order. Mr. Moody would... Oh, sorry. Mr. Moody, would you lead us in prayer, please?
...in prayer, please, for the Lord, thank you for this time, this day, Lord, thank you for the freedom, and we have more of his freedom, Lord, in the middle of this time, and that, Lord, thank you for your Spirit, Lord, your son, Jesus Christ, who came and died for us, getting our sins, thank you for that believing, our Lord, and saying, for your marvelous grace, the Lord our great president, know your saving grace. And we can be witnesses to that, Lord, not only in our words, but in our deeds, in our actions, in our conduct. We can always represent you, represent you, what you want us to. I pray to be about yours today, Lord, in the decisions we make, Lord, that it not only affects them, but it affects people just in these places, children. Lord, I pray to be about you, thank you for going to. Pandemic, with making home, suffer hunger, Lord, suffer danger, teach him, suffer hurting, physically, mentally, Lord, spiritually. Even some, Lord, may you see, for us to experience them, and every fine ways, continually, Lord, protect them, anyway, that we can Lord, by your pardons, and, Lord, thank you that you've done. Thank God, protect us, if it's a wisdom, thank you, Lord, for my best to see, through the end, for you, for our kingdom. Thank you all you've done, for Jesus.
May the standing of the flesh, please, please, our faithful people, of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda today? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? The floor is now open for public comment period. Do I have a motion to close public comment period? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, the joint meeting agenda, Robbinsville Middle School Construction Project, Ms. Knight?
Well, good afternoon, everybody. We'd like to open up the meeting by sharing with some of the resources that you have in front of you. I want a moment, have Kevin White come walk you through this book. Hope this will answer some of the questions that you may have had, and we can certainly follow up on any of those. And maybe give y'all, before we start that, and give you an update, just a moment, to talk about, did you actually, Lord, ask for the meeting? So give us an idea of what you would like to, the outcome of the meeting to be today.
Okay, so I know that my board has several questions, just to clear up from the process of procurement for both architecture and then the construction, what the plan is for the procurement of the construction contracts and the architecture. Also, I think a couple of questions may come up about the soil studies and the engineering, just to satisfy our minds. But there were so many issues in the nineties with the high school, just so we can all make sure we're all on the same page. From my part, we'll need to, once we clear any questions or whatever, I think it would be good for, if you could go through the process, or kind of go through the floor plan, and sort of what's going to look like, architecture and management. And then, for my part, we would need to, my board will need to pass a capital project ordinance, so that, because I have to show the cost of the project and the borrowings on the county financial statement, as well as the school financial statement. And that'll keep us in accordance with GFO one fifty-nine. And then, a resolution for reimbursement on the financing, because the county will have to do a financing on the match. And then, following that, I will need to kind of give you a timeframe or timeline of what it's going to look like for the school board, to know what it looks like from the perspective of what the county has to do in order to get the financing for the match.
Yes?
I need to repeat, what I... Could you hear me okay? Okay. Okay.
Yes, so being social distance is a very tough thing when it comes to the clarity and what we need here. So sure, if anybody needs something repeated, please let us know, and we can make sure we do that, okay? I just want to give a little background, and then I'll let Kevin go through the book that you have, and hopefully that will help answer a lot of those questions, Becky, that you mentioned. Becky and I visited the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, School Construction Division. Seems like a long time now ago, when we knew that these grants were going to become available. The grant itself, we could apply for up to fifteen million dollars. That would be a three-to-one match for the state, and, you know, the one quarter of it from local government. We felt like we, I mean, we could have spent the fifteen million dollars, and we can always have a project. But the pressing need we had was to move the sixth grade to the middle school, so that we could work on classroom ratio at the elementary school, because we have an impending class size reduction mandate, which started this year, to reduce this class size in grades K through three. For instance, we can only have seventeen children in a first grade classroom. We're running about nineteen to twenty. Of course, this year, we're not, but if they all come back, I mean, the board, you know, we'll talk about that, most of our kids are back, but if we were at a hundred percent capacity, we would exceed that minimum requirement right now. So that was our urgency in applying for this grant, plus, we were one of the last school districts to ask for this money. It was the fifth year of the five-year cycle, then it repeats, and we hadn't asked for any money, and my feeling is if there's money out there, we need to go for it, for sure. When they're going to hook seventy-five percent of the bill for us. So we asked for a total grant, and this is already, you guys have signed it already, it's in your book, and Kevin will share that. But the total grant asked was four point one six six, and that was awarded to us in November. So Kevin, if you will just go through the book, and he'll tell you what tab, and then we can go back and begin to answer some of the questions, and hopefully unravel some of these things for you.
It's good over last year, since I don't have a mask on. Ms. Knight asked me to put together this highlight, I guess, more or less, a timeline of the highlights of the construction project. And so, what I'm just going to do is kind of go through this with you, and essentially, again, is a timeframe. And so, the first tab, if you go to A, as Ms. Knight mentioned, when they visited NCDPI to inquire about this grant, we thought we needed to have some initial drawings made up, and so we did contact PFA Architecture, and had some initial drawings made up to basically take that meeting with us. So that is the first thing. Here is the actual grant application that we submitted on September the twelfth of two thousand and nineteen. You will kind of follow me through this grant application on page six of the grant application itself. You'll notice down toward the bottom of the page, right there, you know, we had put in some preliminary timelines, I guess, and, you know, we had anticipated, you know, putting this out for bid in April of two thousand and twenty. Well, of course, COVID has hit, and things have certainly slowed down, and so, you know, we were probably, I guess, six to seven months behind that schedule at this point in time. Also, on the next page, there is the estimated cost, as we submitted the application. And so, as you see there, Ms. Knight just mentioned a moment ago, we were awarded three million two hundred thousand from grant funds from the state, and the county's match portion would be one million sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Yeah, and so the total of the grant, all in all, is four million two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. If you go on to tab C, we received an approval letter from the state superintendent, Mark Johnson, on November the fifteenth, congratulating Grand County Schools for being awarded the grant. And again, if you go back to the previous document right there, it does say in there that we've been approved for an amount of three million two hundred thousand dollars, and that is what is reflected on the submission that I just pointed out a moment ago. All right, tab D. Three days later, we, PFA submitted this design services proposal that had a preliminary project cost, which is on page three of this document. So if you want to look over to the third page of that document, there is a project cost report. Going on to F, there is a list, well, actually, a whole bunch of different documents that goes along with this grant, and this was the first that I had to submit. This was the form of agreement between the county, the LEA, and the state. You notice there in the middle of the page, again, the amount of grants awarded was three million two hundred thousand dollars from the grant funding. Amount of local matching funds was one million sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and the source of the local matching funds was the county commissioners, of course. That document was signed by Mr. Wiggins, and Mr. Nelson, and eventually, on February the eighteenth, by Superintendent of State, North Carolina, Mark Johnson. In tab F, on January the twenty-fourth of this year, two thousand and twenty, we, you know, originally, we, like I said earlier, we had some very preliminary drawings. We did meet with the architecture company to discuss more specifically our needs, and this is just kind of an email string to show you that we had that meeting. Flipping on to tab G, on January twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty, we received this owner and architect agreement. Tab H, on February twelfth of two thousand and twenty, we received this new plan, after we met with the architectures, you know, discussed more specifically what our needs were. If you flip over to the second page, there's a little bit more detailed drawing than what you saw in the first drawing. Now, of course, this is certainly not exactly the end result, but it's getting closer and closer. So tab I.
So if I could tell you a little bit about how the plan started, I can't look at these and look up at the same time, sorry, dollar store glasses. The plan started out, we looked at the sixth grade wing and adding changes to office space around here at the high school to provide for a cafeteria for the middle school. When we really got to looking at what we needed, we decided classroom space was more advantageous, and we could deal with the cafeteria size we had. So we didn't have to look at moving that office suite out, add it on, and making that existing office space cafeteria space. So you'll see some modifications from the beginning plans, which was just kind of a brainstorming session, till as we've kind of worked through, and of course, we've walked through, several of you now walked through, what we've talked about, and so it's all ended up going in the classroom space and pulling the office at the middle school out into that, into the new building, so it could be its own space, so, sorry.
Need to be about, I'll be more than welcome. In that previous drawing that we were just looking at right there, you'll notice the middle school plans is of the sixth grade wing, the wing that we're planning on adding. Of course, it is behind the school back here. And so, you know, we did know that there apparently some issues back there, and so we thought it was a good idea to have some soil samples done. And so, you can see in section I right there, where we requested those soil samples to be done. Flipping on to section J, on April the sixteenth of this year, the soil sample report was emailed to Grand County Schools. You can see the report, and the full report is in your pocket there. Flipping on to K, this is just an email string, basically, you know, of course, that soil samples report, a lot of things that we didn't necessarily understand. And so, Ms. Knight, through this string of emails, basically asked Scott to interpret, or Scott Donald, to interpret the results of the soil boring test. Essentially, what we did find out was that the ground could be built upon, however, there would need to be some improvements made. And so I will kind of point that out to you here in just a moment. Section L, again, after more conversing with PFA, and them asking us, you know, more about our needs and things, and we received another drawing. And you'll notice there, the only thing different in this drawing and the prior one is the pink classrooms right there, and basically, that is where the old middle school office used to be. And so, the plan here is to have the old middle school offices renovated, in order to provide a more appropriate resource room for our students. Going on to section E. On May the twenty-eighth, Mrs. Garland here asked Ms. Knight to request the meeting with everyone, and that's basically what that email string right there is about. On, going to section N, we had, that meeting was held on June the tenth. I was out of town that day, so I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but that meeting was held on June the tenth. I believe we had representatives of Grand County Schools, and Miss Garland, and Jason Moreno, were at that meeting. This meeting, this email string right here is essentially Scott Donaldson saying, you know, that he was happy to meet with everyone today. And also, he sent, there was an attachment in that email that was sent to Ms. Knight, Lester Green, myself, Miss Garland, and Jason Moreno. And if you look on the second page of that, there is that attachment that was sent. Basically, in here, it talks about the cost of the project, and the design cost, you can see where, I guess, the architectural fees are broken down monthly. We'll see there that it comes down to November, that we would be doing the bidding process in November of this year. Also, going down into the construction and testing, remember a minute ago, I mentioned to you that from the soil borings, that we didn't know we were going to have to do some improvements back there, and so that cost is included there with the website remediation of one hundred and twenty thousand. Anyway, you can look through the rest of that document, and it does total up to the four million two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which was our award that we spoke about earlier. Going on to section O, this is just a reply to Scott's email from Jason Moreno, saying that, you know, the direct CM that would look forward to working with you in the future. Went on to P. You'll notice here, this was on June the twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty, Grand County Schools received this email. And basically, what we had asked the architects to do, where the new addition is going to go, here in the back of the school, the most appropriate place to put it, back there, looking at the soil reports. The actual addition itself will partially sit on top of a storage building that a carpenter class uses right now, and so we were going to have to relocate, I guess, provide another space for the carpenter shop to have storage. And so, that's what this drawing right here does, it adds the, it's moving the storage building over down close to the baseball field. Going on to section Q, on July the twenty-first, Mrs. Knight received an email from Chip Howell from PFA, asking more, some more specific questions. There was also a schematic design attached to that, and that follows in section R. There is the schematic design that was sent to us on that date. For some reason, we got that email on, well, the twenty-first of July, but if you look at the actual schematic design, it had a date of seven ten on it. And so that was the first time that we actually received really, really in-depth drawings here of what the school would look like. You know, of course, after asking lots of specific questions, and lots of answering, a lot of specific questions about lots of types and polar types, and all that type of stuff. Going on to section S, on July the twenty-seventh, I received an email from the electrical engineers requesting to see our energy records. And essentially, what that was, was basically to check out to see if our existing electrical services would be adequate for the new addition. Going on to section T, on August the twelfth, Chip Howell from PFA emailed myself and Miss Walsh, and was asking, requesting a meeting, I guess, and we eventually scheduled that meeting for August the twentieth, and you can see some of the questions that he had there. But if you flip on to section U, we did have that meeting on August the twentieth, and the second page of that email string right there was an attachment for the agenda, just basically, things that they were, you know, asking us for on that specific occasion. In section B, this is a document that we received from the architectures, from the architects, on September the second, with a link to the files that they were going to submit to DPI for DPI's approval. I did include the drawings that they had there, so if you flip over, you'll notice a date of eight twenty-four on those drawings, and again, they're more specific there, you know, getting on down into the structure, the engine, the electrical, you know, all that type of stuff. And then, the last tab is section T, which we received, I didn't write that down, but we received it, I guess, one day last week, late last week. This was, and this is a very preliminary document as of right now, but it is a notice to bidders. And I think that's about all I was going to go through, I'm sure that Mrs. Knight or myself would be happy to answer any other questions.
So that's a lot of information. So we're to the point, essentially, that we're looking about being able to maybe bid out the project. So it hasn't been enough to drive, let's do some language, in a draft form for that, so that's where we are.
If I may, what can I add for you? First off, I want to thank you all for agreeing to be with us. I want to thank you all for agreeing to be with us. We are very supportive of the project. Our goal here is not to interfere or delay, we are going to be responsible for delivering a million dollars as the funds. And we want to basically be informed about the process. Your process that you go through is so much different than what we have to go through. And so, I think just not being aware of the process caused us a little bit of concern. Kevin, I really appreciate you taking the time and putting this notebook together. It's got a lot of really good information in it. We did have questions about the foundation, that kind of thing, because those of us that were around when the high school was built, remember all the issues that had to be dealt with there, so I'm very grateful to see that you've done those things, and of course, you have said that, so that's very good. So I think the biggest thing for us probably is the fact that we are going to have to finance the county's provision of it, and there's a lot of red tape that we have to jump through in order to do that. And I'm sure Miss Garland can explain all of that in detail, but I want to go back to the other book, and then I'll be professional. I can tell you, I just appreciate having this. In the midst of this pandemic, communication has been a serious issue for every type of government, and so it's good to have this, and I'm glad you did it again. And that, Miss Garland, I think at this point, we'll just go on to what you need, and the county needs from the school board, as far as what we're going to have to do financially.
And I also appreciate this notebook, because this is going to make it much easier when we're working with local government commission as we go forward on the financing, so I appreciate that. You did a whole lot of my work. The first thing that I will need to do is ask my board to pass a capital project ordinance, and I presented this at the April board meeting, that we would recognize a total appropriation, including our grant funding, of four million two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the architecture, engineering, and construction of the capital project, with three point two million dollars to be provided by the school capital fund. And the match would come from loan borrowings, and just to give you a little bit of refresh, we're so thankful for the additional sales tax that we get through the five twenty-four sales tax expansion. And so, those funds, as we were working our way through the grant application, I think we agreed that the funds that we receive from that allocation of sales tax will fund the debt service on this project. So that's going to be a real blessing to allow that, that way, the taxpayers won't have to take any bite out of property tax dollars that come from this five twenty-four expansion. So with that being said, on the capital project ordinance, I would ask my board to approve this ordinance, so that we can go forward with the financing. Okay, thank you so much. And then, as I mentioned earlier as well, then we will, I need to do a declaration of official intent to reimburse, and this states that the issuer anticipates incurring expenditures for the construction of the sixth grade wing at the Robbinsville High School slash Middle School under the North Carolina Needs-Based School Capital Fund Grant Program. The plan of finances, the issuer intends to finance the grant match requirements, where the county will be responsible for twenty-five percent of the matching funds, and the project cost would not exceed the four point two six six seven. And the project cost would not exceed the 4.2667 billion. The maximum amount of the debt to be issued would be the match of $1,666,667. The debt service payments will be financed from the proceeds of the school's portion of section 524 sales tax expansion funds. I would need to ask my board to approve this intent to reimburse. What happens with this is we know that there's costs that have already been incurred on this project, mainly the architecture cost. And this will allow me to go ahead and pay those costs under the capital project and then reimburse the county with the loan proceeds. If I don't do this piece, then it would be all county dollar and we would not be able to use the loan proceeds. So I would need to ask my board to approve this intent to reimburse. And just to give just a thumbnail sketch of what will happen next. Now, I understand I'm having the notice to bidder that the bidding will occur on November 2nd. That's the anticipation. Okay, so because we're having to finance the match, what I'll be doing between now and then is working with our debt consultant to go ahead and create a financing package that cannot be presented to the local government commission until we have bids in hand. So once the bidding occurs, I would need to get copies of the bids. And of course, they're going to be approved by your architect and signed off. And then we will submit the application to local government commission for the financing. In addition, we will also be working on getting our own bids for the financing. And so what has traditionally worked best for Grand County is for us to go with what we call a private placement, which is just a bank, bank financing instead of a bond. Because number one, it's faster. And number two, the interest rates are usually more competitive. So we're going to try to get the best thing out of that weekend. And so hopefully, all of this will work in conjunction with one another, that we'll be getting the bids from the bank about the time you guys are working up your bids for the building. And then that whole package to go to local government commission, you have to wait till their board meeting. So, and that's been a little bit more difficult because of COVID. I'm guessing they do it virtually. They will approve or disapprove of financing. I don't anticipate any issues or problems. The county's in good financial position. And, you know, we've got clean audits. So it's, it's hopefully just a matter of them approving it and then moving forward. Then we'll get the funding in place. I was asking, I was talking to Scott Donald earlier because I wanted to find out, you know, what his process is. And the way we've done it in the past when we did the P and J billing and some other financing, he, I think he's going to revise this bid document just a little bit to where whoever does the bid will have to hold their pricing for 120 days. And that gives us time to get the financing in place. So he may have to move the timeline a little bit as well on when he would commence construction.
And we'll work together on that timeline.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted everybody to be clear on the hooks that county has to jump through because it's been a long time since we did any financing for a school project. So it's exciting to see this happen.
Becky, will you remind us, because I had a board member ask me, when was our Q's out on the end of the year?
It matures September 2021. So we've got one more installment. I just made it the next to the last installment. And then, and when I emails, the bond, the school bond on this school returns a year or two after that. So we're getting really close to getting this first financing finalized in, you know...
Then we'll start a new elementary school.
So, you know, we're in a good, we're in a good, exciting place for Grand County to be able to work with the school system on getting some good stuff finalized finally and then in place. Anybody got any questions as far as the process that the county has to follow? Yeah, 2023 is our final payment on this one. So that's a good one. Questions?
And so we're glad as we have additional things come in, we'll share those out with y'all. And maybe we, we're welcome to try to get our meetings started back now that there's a little more flexibility and having some meetings. And I'm sure that maybe we're going to be meeting anyway. We're going to work on that timeline for about two years.
I'll keep, I'll keep Ms. Knight in the loop and Mr. Green in the loop as far as where we are in the financing process. And, you know, if we need to, if you guys, you guys are welcome to listen in to any of the calls here as our debt consultant so that you can know where we are and you can keep your point in mind.
Some plans for long term, but it will take a few weeks to get a review. And I would request, I already have Mick and C.C. and Brooke, Jason, and E. Thompson, Scott, and construction stuff from around the campus.
Did you in the last six months has bounced back to me? So it's an error on my part.
You wanted to email that address?
Well, I had jason.morino@grandcounty.org. But it, for some reason, doesn't like to send you an email. So that'd be good.
So I would ask Mr. White going forward, since he's created this nice binder for us, to forward to Ms. Garland perpnet documents. I don't think we need to see your email streams, but documents that are part of this, if you would send those to her and just add which section they might belong to, and then she can get those out to us and we can put it in our binder and keep track of it. I would appreciate that. Ms. Garland, do you have anything else?
I will have a couple of requests. I think we've got one that Mr. Green sent a month or so ago while we were waiting on this school board meeting for the board to approve. The first one is for some additional planning and design costs of $4,127.25. So that's the state portion. Our part would be $1,375.75, for which I'll need Commissioner Wiggins to sign so we can make the requisition request. And then you've sent me another one, and I apologize, I did not print it all. There's a third one if you want to. I meant to bring that, and I apologize. And then a third request would be a total for architecture of $70,191.05, of which the state grant will pay $52,643.29. And the local match would be $17,547.76. And I'll just ask Mr. Wiggins to sign, and then we'll shoot it back over to you, Mr. Green.
You want a motion to the papers? A motion to motion to the papers on its status?
Yes, sir.
A motion to approve those expenses? Anything else?
I don't have.
All right, very good. You guys got anything for us? Well, again, we appreciate you taking the time out of your day. And again, I want to say again, Mr. White, I appreciate the binder. It's, it's good to have information and when people have questions in the binder, and you can answer the questions. And I always like to be able to answer questions when people have it. So again, thank you. And if nothing further, we will have a motion to the commission to adjourn.
Thank you. So my board will stay, and we need to talk a little bit about bringing kids through the fifth grade back to school.
All right, next on the agenda is personnel, Ms. Knight?
So yes, I have two names to bring to you. I don't know if you want those in closed session or if you just, they're, they're some of our own staff or people we've employed before. That would be a board's pleasure. You're also on Facebook, but... So I have a name to bring to you for a substitute and also a name for an after-school worker. So the name that I bring you is a substitute is someone that's been a substitute for us in the past, and she's getting back on the substitute list, Ms. Pam Moody. And then Chandra Bowen. Chandra Bowen. She is working with us through the AmeriCorps grant at the elementary school. So she's not our employee. She works on our campus through that grant, but she would be employed through our after-school program as a substitute. So just to repeat, Mr. Caringer said that he would recuse himself for the selection of the substitute.
What's the pleasure of the board to accept Mr. Caringer's recusal because Pam Moody is his assistant? Is the board in favor of him voting or letting him just recuse himself and not vote? What's yours' pleasure? Your pleasure is you don't care if he does vote? All right, do I have a motion for personnel, substitute Pam Moody and an after-school worker, Okay, Ms. Knight, revision of remote instruction procedures.
So as most of you know, last week Governor Cooper announced that we were able to bring students preschool through fifth grade back to school beginning October 5th on a Plan A, which for us, we already have preschool kids here five days a week. We have kindergarten through third grade students here four days a week. It would just be allowing the fourth and fifth graders to come on. And my recommendation to you will be four days a week, that we continue to have Wednesdays because we continue, our sixth to 12th grade will still be in a cohort coming two days a week, like they have been. And then we are also discussing at 2:00 now, and we talked about the last board meeting, in order for us to work with our remote students. So I will, in just a moment, make a recommendation to you that we bring back all of our students through fifth grade in that pattern. I have asked Ms. Beth Booth from the health department to kind of just give you a short update on Grand County health status so that you can kind of see forward at how she sees health and pandemic affecting our school system. And maybe she can answer if y'all have any questions that will help you in your decision.
Okay, so as far as the health status in Grand County, I don't know how many of you follow us in face-to-face contact. We were up to 138 this morning. I have sat down actually this morning with Rita, my nursing director, and asked her, with the nursing home outbreak, it's, it's pretty damp and bleak. So what you're looking at with that 138, only about 60 of those, we're estimating somewhere between 50 and 60 are actually county cases. So cases that are not related to the nursing home outbreak, whether that be staff, the relatives of staff, close contacts of staff, residents themselves, or we have another cluster that was associated with a church. So we can take both of those clusters out and just do what we call community acquired COVID. So if you look at community acquired COVID cases, we're only looking at about 60 since this started in March. And less than half of those are actually active COVID cases at this point. So you're only looking active in the county right now, somewhere between 20 and 30 cases. So we're actually doing really, really well. The nursing home outbreak is tragic, but it's, as far as this board is concerned, irrelevant. So, yeah, you're looking at some pretty staggering numbers right now, but they are staggering as far as our outbreak. So as far as me and Angie have had this conversation, bringing the kids back, I am not concerned with it. My only question for her was the capacity issue of making sure all of those children get screened before they come in the building. They've been really good about stuffing them before they even get in the door. And I think that's where we're being able to hit these things off. The parents in the county, the face-to-face kids right now, have been great about if they test positive, the parents, keeping their children home. And if their children are symptomatic, they're not sending them. So as your capacity increases, making sure those parents have been as good about it as the parents that are coming right now is a big, big thing. And we may try to work out kind of a PSA or something to put in the paper to warn, especially depending on how much the capacity increases, parents of the procedure because obviously the lines are going to get longer, you know, things are going to take a little bit longer. So, but just making sure that the staff can hold up to the standards of our whole thing and the protocols and all that right now, with that being a children. So really, that was my only not even concern or caveat as this goes back to Plan A. No problem with Plan A. Like I said, as far as the county, we're doing very well. So that's not really a concern. It's just making sure that the cleaning protocols and the screening protocols more than anything are maintained.
So, so my recommendation would be that K through 5 will be coming four days a week, which is similar to what we're doing now at K 3. Then we come Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is a remote day, and then Thursday, Friday. All kids in those grades. Yeah, so, so just as Mr. White pointed out, parents still have a choice to...
Yeah, so, so just as Mr. White pointed out, parents still have a choice to choose remote learning. That will be a choice all year and we'll support remote learning the rest of the year. So, uh, just some additional, uh, PPE and, uh, preparations we'll have in place. We got notice today that there'll be additional thermal screeners, walkthrough screeners. We have six of those that have been, um, purchased for the school system through a grant. So they will be installed probably by the end of the week versus next week. So they essentially just take the temperatures, you come through the door and they'll be placed outside the door or just right inside the door because of weather right now, might be right inside the door. But certainly to catch the children right as they come through with another temperature check. We've been successful in using the plexiglass barriers with each child, uh, in the classroom. So that gives them another layer of protection in the classroom. Kids have done great with wearing masks. Um, we've been able to give them some breaks as they move in too, but by, by Mars have done very well. Uh, little kids particularly have adjusted very well. We're, we're pleased with what we're seeing. Uh, we would like to see everyone come back. So that's what we're hoping for. The meeting for, the announcement from the governor was, um, was a nice surprise, but it was still a surprise even to superintendents. I knew about it that morning, uh, early on before he announced it at three o'clock. Uh, we do anticipate him, um, moving to, possibly moving to a different phase, uh, in the state or at least addressing that in the next couple of weeks, Ms. Booth. So, well, moving to another phase for the whole, for the whole state. So, um, we will, we'll be interested to see what he does for sixth to twelfth grade in the coming nine or seven. So my recommendation would be that this would start on October the thirteenth, which would be the first day of the second nine weeks. October twelfth is a teacher work day. So the thirteenth would be the first day that we would come back with pre-K through five under Plan A. Now, so I guess I would just like to feel better if you would do a, just maybe have a vote on if we can come back on the Plan A for those grades.
Do I have a motion to accept the revision of remote instruction procedures as presented by Ms. Knight? Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Booth. Ms. Knight, are there any announcements?
Uh, at this point, our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be a short meeting on October the sixth at the regular time at ten AM. Any questions for me about what's going on at school or any updates that I can give you? Because this is kind of an interim meeting and.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor?